Need approval for the May 10, 2012 minutes or any changes or additions that need to be made?
No approval as reported.
Second? Motion to second to approve is reported. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's your now official. Council Lady Langston.
Thank you and good afternoon to me. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and members of the Commission. It's always a pleasure to be here. I don't get to come here often, but it's a pleasure to be here, even though I am feeling a little bit under weather today, but I am. I'm going to be with you to give my remarks and then if you have any questions, I'd like to ease out to the emergency room. But I am here today on proposal 2012 SP dash 011 dash 001, the Westmont Pacific Plan project. Last Wednesday, May 16, I held a community meeting to allow the residents of the present applicant to present the proposal and answer questions and gather comments from the resident. The meeting was well attended and the residents voiced constructive criticism and much-needed feedback. The applicant was unable to address some of these comments immediately specifically by adding 60 additional parking spaces and increasing the setback along the interior property line from five feet to a minimum of 15 feet. And this was one of the major concerns, traffic in parking and the setback. There are still some remaining comments and concerns that I will continue to work with the applicant to make further revisions to the plan as it moves forward through the zone change process. I support this project and I respectfully ask for your favorable approval. Thank you in advance for your cooperation in this regard. As I said in my letter, there are still some concerns. I think when you hear from the applicant today that they have addressed them, there are still some further concerns and I hope to be holding another meeting before the second reading in the council July 3. And if you have any questions for me, I know that's out of order, but I'd like to answer them at this time. And I'm going to ask Joanie Priest if she would pass out this letter to you so you would have my remarks reduced in writing.
Hunter, do you have questions?
I just have one question. Council Lady, I'm sorry you're not feeling well. Do you have a ride from here?
Yes, I do. I thought I was going to have a limo ride, but the interstate is backed up, so limos don't drive it interstate. But yes, I can get home safely. Thank you for your concern. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a good afternoon.
You go ahead and put well and we'll take care of your business here. Councilman Potts will speak now. Are you? Okay. Councilman Domney? Okay. Any other councilmen in the room that I missed? And any items to be deferred?
No items on your deferral or withdrawal agenda.
Okay. Items on consent?
Yes, we have several items on the consent agenda. And before we get to that, let me give the audience this information. If you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal that decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of the entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Now, the next item is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or a member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. So here is your recommended consent agenda for today. Beginning on page five, item number three, two-family definition change. This is a text amendment, a request to amend section 1704060 of the zoning code in its definition of two-family units, and staff recommends approval. Item number four, Old Hickory Village specific plan. This is a periodic review of the Old Hickory Village SP to determine its completeness. It's for properties on Donaldson Avenue between Elliston Street and Hadley Avenue permitting 91 multifamily units and a maximum of 45,000 square feet of non-residential uses. Staff recommends that you find the SP to be inactive and direct staff to prepare a report to the council to continue the implementation of the development plan as adopted and that no rezoning is recommended on this property. On page six, item number six, this is at 7301 Highway 70 South. It's a request to rezone property from R15 to RM20 for a portion of property at 7301 Highway 70 South. Staff recommends approval. Item number seven, at 6, excuse me, 265 Old Hickory Boulevard. It's a request to rezone from the CS district to the MUL district, property located at 265 Old Hickory Boulevard, and staff recommends approval. Also on page six, item number eight, Chippington 2. It's a request to cancel a portion of the Chippington 2 planned unit development on property located at 1306 Corland Drive. Staff recommends approval. On page seven, item number nine, The Grove at Devon Hills. It's a request to revise the preliminary plan for a portion of Devon Hills residential pud located on property at 2816 Old Hickory Boulevard and zoned RM4 to permit the development of 220 multifamily units where 350 multifamily units were previously approved. Staff recommends approval with conditions. Finally, on page eight, item number 14, we have a new employment contract for Dwayne Cuffordson, and staff recommends approval. And that's the end of the consent agenda.
Okay. Staff has recommended the following items to be on consent. Item number two, excuse me, item three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 14. Is there a motion to accept those?
Mr. Chairman, in looking over at item number three, I just wanted to get, generally I know that sometimes this subject can be controversial and I know that Councilman Cleburne probably can give me, I just don't know why. It looks like it's fine. I just wanted just a little explanation on item number three, and I know that he could tell me all about it.
Well, I will, Mr. Bernhardt will correct me if I'm in error here, but the short thing is that this would allow detached dwellings outside of the UZO with, where there's an overlay of some type, especially historic overlay, with the approval or the oversight of the Historic Commission.
Yeah. Only correction is just inside the UZO because, yeah, inside. Outside, you can do it by right and inside, you can do it, if it's passage, you could do it in the areas that have a historic district and they review it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to accept these on? Second? Motion second to accept items three, four, six, seven, eight, nine, and 14 on consent. All in favor? Any opposed? Those are now officially approved. Members in the audience, what we'll be hearing on public hearing today is item one, which is Fern Avenue, item two, A, B, and C, and D, which is Niceburg Village, and item A, Westmont Apartments, and item C, five B, excuse me, is 31st and Long. All the others have been approved.
Commissioners, this is item number one, the zone change on Fern Avenue. The request is for a zone change from RS5, a single-family zone, to R6. Staff recommends approval. The zoning right now is RS5, which allows us for a single-family dwelling on a minimum 5,000 square foot lot. Proposed zoning would allow, would have a minimum of 6,000 square foot lot and would allow two-family dwellings. The land use policy is mixed housing and neighborhood urban. This was a, the mixed housing policy was a specific policy put in with the Cleveland Park Detailed Neighborhood Design Plan, and it allowed, it allows for much higher densities in this area and recommends a variety of housing types. So the proposal for the zoning classification to allow two-family zoning, two-family zones would follow that policy recommendation, and staff recommends approval.
Side of this open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes if they're here, like to make a presentation. You can keep two minutes of that back for rebuttal if you like.
I would like to thank you for taking this opportunity to listen to me today. I'm Thomas Hale and I live at number eight Fern Avenue. I own four pieces of property there. I was born and raised on Fern Avenue. It's a street with about 17 houses left on it. I bought two pieces of property next door to my house and had the houses torn down. And I would benefit by this rezone, but I'm not planning as a homeowner of leaving my area. So that is a reason that I bought these two pieces of property, adjoining my property to keep these zone changes from happening. I want to see it remain a single-family neighborhood. We've got neighbors here that's with me today in the audience that they've seen me grow up in that neighborhood, and I raised my two girls there in this neighborhood, and it's always been a single-family dwelling neighborhood. And we definitely don't want to see it where it's two or three families living in one unit, and that's what we hope to.
Excuse me, sir. Are you the applicant? Are you the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. I asked for the applicant then to, they would speak first and they'd be allowed 10 minutes, but is the applicant in the audience? Okay. You have around 10 minutes. You can keep two of it back for rebuttal if you like.
I'm Daniel Bryant. I'm the owner of this here lot. And really what me and my family was trying to do is to really bring up the neighborhood, the area. It was going to be, we're trying to put an upscale duplex town, where it's not so much of a duplex, but a townhouse type of, type of piece of property that would just kind of clean up the neighborhood a little bit. It's nothing for two or three families to so much come and crowd the neighborhood or bring the neighborhood down. But as you can see, you know, we just want to try to bring in something to just enhance it because I've been raised around this area. I grew up and, I mean, it's just a, it's sore, it's a, it's a eyesore out here, and we just trying to do something better, you know, for the neighborhood and for the community. That's basically what we're, we're trying to do.
Okay. Thank you. You will have two minutes to rebut after the public speaker's spoken. Anybody else here in addition and support the applicant? Okay. Seeing none, then anybody in opposition can speak at this time?
Not finished yet.
Yes, sir.
Again, I would like to say that I was born and raised in this neighborhood, and I have been trying through the Metro Public Works. I don't know how many of you familiar with the Fern Avenue overpass. I mean, most of you go right up under 65 there every day. I've been trying for years to get the public works and zoning and everyone, our councilmen, work with them on numerous occasions to get them to put sidewalks from the bridge over to the Dixon Road area. We have a lot of schoolchildren walking up and down this street, and if we want to better the neighborhood, we can do it by this, putting sidewalks on that street. I mean, they're all around us. They're on Joseph, the Stockholm, and where very few kids live at. And we live on the busiest street that separates the out-of-town traffic because a lot of our traffic from out of town at 4:00, they come up over the Fern Street bypass to hit White's Creek Pike or Bridge Church Pike. And it's a lot more beautification that we could do besides sticking a two-story dwelling home on such a small acre lot. I mean, we've got neighbors that have been living there 42 and 43 years, and you wouldn't even notice their house next door if something like this was to go up in our neighborhood. It's not the best neighborhood in the world far as I, but it is one of the better neighborhoods to live in. We don't have any trouble there whatsoever. We don't have any police calls there in the neighborhood. Everybody knows what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to live right and get along with one another, and that's what we do on that little 17-house street that we live on. Thank you for your concern.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Can we get his name? Can we get his name?
Hello. My name is Helen Allen. I live at 20 Fern Avenue. I've lived there for 42 years. There's never been a two-family dwelling in this neighborhood, and I don't think my house is an eyesore. It's home. We keep our house up and our property up, and we're proud to live where we live. And I don't think they should put something in there. For 20 years, we have watched that property next door just deteriorate. There's been drinking there, fighting, drugs, weeds everywhere, and we try to keep our property up. They don't watch our property on account of that one. So I don't think that they should put a two-family dwelling on that little lot. It will decrease our value and our property, and I just don't think it should happen. That's how I feel about it. And I don't care if anybody having a home, that's not it. A one-house dwelling is fine, but two families, I just don't think they should change the zoning. And I appreciate y'all listening to me. Thank you.
My name is Ken Jakes, and I didn't fill out a request to speak for him. I didn't even know this was on the agenda until I saw Tommy come up here, but I know Tommy very well. He's a dear friend of mine, and I'm very familiar with this location. And from what I've heard about this, putting this two-story house, I can assure you it will not fit in with this community, and Tommy takes pride in his place. If you go out there and look at Tommy, you won't even see a cigarette butt laying on the street in front of his house. He takes pride in it. This does not fit that community, and I'm just going to put my two cents in for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Would the applicant like to rebut what's been said?
Well, there's one thing that I would say is, all of the drugs and everything that you're speaking on, I wasn't a owner of this piece of property. I just recently bought this property and I demolished it, and because I want it to be a better place, and if you go across the interstate, you will see two-family dwellings within less than 400 feet, but that is not what, when I say two-family dwellings, I am not talking about those type of dwellings. I'm talking about a very upscale, like down here on Second Avenue, something really nice. And I would just hope that we, like I was saying, we're just cleaning up the neighborhood, not trying to bring in trash, drugs, or anything like that. But, I mean, I know y'all have been there for so many odd years, and, I mean, if you look at the picture, you can see what you're dealing with, and I'm just trying to, for my family to provide and, you know, do some sense I've bought the property. As a matter of fact, I own the property next to it also, and, you know, we were just trying to clean up the neighborhood, and I understand and feel, you know, what y'all are saying, but I just feel like it's still can be, a lot of work to be done. I mean, that's all I, you know, have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Andre.
I was curious about the overall intent and the plan, that the whole detailed plan calls for a variety of housing with mixed housing detailed policy. So is, is that, can you, do you have a land use map to show us sort of where that lies?
I don't have a land use map.
Well, that's what I meant.
Okay. But this is the policy, policy slide for the general vicinity of this lot. And this area in gray, excuse me, is the mixed housing policy area in the Cleveland, in the Cleveland Park Detailed Neighborhood Design Plan. And this area, I mean, when, when it says that a mix of housing types is recommended, I mean, it's, it's really pushing the density recommendation up to RM40, which is 40 units acre, up to RM40 or RM60. So, you know, much higher densities were envisioned by that detailed neighborhood design plan. And this would be, I mean, this is, this is a much smaller uptick in, in density, but much, you know, really the, the proposal of that plan was to go significantly higher than this.
Great. Good. No comments. Hunter?
I guess I've just got a concern, seeing one lot in, albeit a small but somewhat established Is this one of the areas that we downzoned within the last 10 years or so from previously allowing duplexes?
This was, this had two-family zoning, and I believe it was changed back, changed to single-family zoning in 2004.
And then when was this community plan updated?
Oh, I believe it was, I believe it was 2006, a few years afterward.
So the community plan's really seeing this area as potential for significant redevelopment, whether the timing's right for that or not, not necessarily just the small tick and increased density. And again, I always get confused when the word spot zoning comes up, but it feels, I worry about these areas that the council for, I mean, I'm a supporter of increasing density, of course. I think we all appreciate the benefits of that. But all these areas that were deliberately rezoned to single-family only, if, you know, what's special about this particular property or different about this particular property with all the others across town that have been downzoned? And, you know, how many more of these are we going to start seeing to just take one parcel and rezone it back to allow duplexes? So that would be my concern. I'll see what everyone else has to say.
Judy?
That was my concern too, and one of the words that I wrote down was, it feels like spot zoning to me. And I remember when we downzoned this, and then I remember the plan when it came in. But I don't think the intent of the plan was to take lot by lot. And, and there are, as the applicant said, several duplexes out through this area, two-family resident available. What would prevent, if we approved this, then next week, another lot comes in, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't, we would have already set a precedence for doing what I feel like is just little spot zoning. What would keep us from approving others that come in?
I know it's a 25% limit, but 25% in a 17-house street. The 25% wouldn't apply if the zoning were actually changed on each specific lot.
I mean, the policy calls for this to be upzoned, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't be inappropriate to have different lots or, you know, the issue I think the commission needs to wrestle with is that, do you want a certain number of lots to be rezoned, or do you want to do it piecemeal? I mean, in order to be consistent with the policy, because the policy does call for the, you know, the emerging of this area in a higher density character. So, you know, do you want to do it lot by lot, or would you prefer to have, you know, a block face or something else like that?
And doing it lot by lot, you get into the whole character issues, these single-family homes, one-story, putting something in between two houses, two stories, I don't know, doesn't feel right, but I'll listen to my two colleagues' wisdom.
Philip? Well, I think our ESP is working. See what I wrote down here? Spot. Is there any reason that this could by definition be spot zoning? Is that a legal question?
You know, generally, spot zoning is going to be, I would, I would argue in this particular case that if you're zoning consistent with the policy, there are a number of zoning districts that are consistent with the policy. And therefore, you know, you could have a number of zoning districts that are in here. There needs to be a reason that you would either do this and not do the others. Our argument probably would be you could do the others if somebody wanted to apply for them. Or the other part of a spot zoning would be when you're blatantly out of character with the policy. If you're doing something that's a commercial, a residential policy and you put commercial in it, it's clearly, clearly at odds there.
In this case, it's not at odds with.
It's at odds with the policy.
The other thing is just for our edification, this is 0.14 acres. What, where does R6 start? How small a lot can you put that on?
That's 6,000. 6,000 square feet.
All right. I'd have to do the math real quick to figure.
I have a calculator right here. Let me. That's, that's 0.14, just under 0.14.
So it's just, it's just barely on the age of that.
That's right.
But it qualifies. That's all. Okay. Thank you.
Councilman?
What's the zoning with the orange with the little white dots? What's that zoning on?
That is CS zoning. That's Commercial Service zoning.
Okay. So the, so it's the closest other residential then, is that on Joseph Avenue, that RS5?
This, this, here's the property that we're looking at today, and RS5 is on all, if you look at this line right here, this is the dividing line between the RS5 and the CS zone. So all of these lots up here are also zoned RS5.
Okay. Go back to the colored slide again now. Okay. So everything in green is RS5 then? No?
It's, it's still the same, the zoning lines are still on this. Here's the RS5, here's that same dividing line between RS5 and CS zoning.
Okay. So everything in green is green for what reason? Is that part of the overlay?
That's the policy. Right. That's the mixed housing policy.
That's the policy. Okay. Okay. All right. You know, it would, it would make me feel a lot more comfortable if there was more than one lot here that we were doing. But considering that it's, considering the policy that's in place and the intent of that policy, then, you know, I don't, I don't know that that outweighs my dislike for one, one lot starting.
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to look at the policy in the outset, because I had the same concern. We're doing one lot, but on the other hand, when, how do you ever start? Or do, you know?
Well, I think just to provide some, I don't know, some things to think about here. Clearly, what the policy called for is the intensification of development along Dickerson Pike with a mixed-use development and higher, more intense residential behind that, supportive of that. I think the commission, this is consistent with the policy. However, if in fact, because it's moving you towards that. But I think you could equally, and if it's hearing the commission, I think what I've heard is that, that you're not sure that just moving this from a single-family to a duplex moves you towards the policy. a duplex moves you towards the policy. What you're doing, what you would prefer to have is the aggregation of lots and moving it to something more intense than just a duplex. And therefore, therefore, it may not be appropriate interpretation of the policy as you have here, absent the aggregation of lots and something more intense than simply going from a single-family to a duplex. That's just one way, hearing what you're saying, I think that's kind of what you're wrestling with. It's not a, that interpretation of the policy is not a yes or no. It is consistent, but you may want to jump into deeper water than just wading a little bit deeper.
Could I ask one other question? Rick, has any of the lots on Ligon Avenue changed, something that you know of, that back up to this?
I don't think so, no.
Nothing, okay.
Is this the first piece of property that's come in to ask for the?
Yeah, I mean, we've had, we've had a good amount of property on the west side of the interstate that has redeveloped, and I guess you even have an SP, I think, on the agenda today on there. But I don't think, I don't recall anything that we've had really east of the interstate in this, in this area. Obviously, you've had some redevelopment that has begun on Dickerson Pike with the MDHA development and some other things, but you're just beginning to see, I think, what you'll probably see in the future, which is the, a lot more interest in these neighborhoods. I mean, it's a close-in neighborhood, it's got good access, it is a good neighborhood. So, how it develops, you know, is something, I think that is something the commission could consider, if you'd prefer it to be a little more, a little more intense and a little more intentional, as opposed to just a, just a single-family to duplex.
Let me ask Greg a quick question. Was there any discussion when you were going over this with the applicant of including both of the lots he owns rather than just the one?
I didn't, I didn't personally speak about that with the applicant.
They're going to ask the applicant, I think he said that's his point.
Yeah, Pete, come to the microphone.
All right, come on up and answer that question. What is your preference as far as?
That's her plan, but since this lot is empty, the, the next lot next to it, her father lives in it, and we are working on finding a spot, a place for him, so therefore, we want to combine them in half.
Okay, what, to the right or the left, which one?
To the right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Can I think out loud for a second? You know, I'd rather defer this. I'd rather this come back as, as a group, either two or three or four at one time. I really feel like in some definitions, it would be considered spot zoning, and it bothers me.
I would rather see a more intentional development, if it's going to be more intentional to have a mixed housing available out here. I just don't want to see a hodgepodge or a patchwork, I guess.
I have a question.
If we recommend disapproval, this will still go through the, through council? It can, yeah.
It can, because the bill has been filed.
Take the bill forward if you'd like.
The bill has not been?
No, bill hasn't, I don't think the bill's been filed, it didn't.
And if we, if we recommend disapproval, the applicant could come back, whether we defer it or disapprove, the applicant could still come back with a different proposal in the future.
Correct.
Would the applicant come back to take an entire area? Would that be councilman's bill to do that?
Well, property owners who get together, or the council member could do that, either way, yeah.
Is there any I noticed about the NU policy? It talks about how you can assure appropriate design, the type of development conforms with the intent of the policy. I'm just sort of being the devil's advocate for a second. Sometimes there's a positive side of having things come up organically so that by the end, the neighborhood feels like it's a neighborhood and not a development that's so cookie-cutter that nobody wants to live there, or it just seems like there's no sense of place. So, it does seem like if you could have the two lots together, you have some intention, but maybe you don't have to have thirty lots at once. What threshold are we going to have to say when it's big enough to shift or not? I just, I don't really know that answer. I'm not, I'm not on that, of course, exactly, I just want to throw it out there, that sometimes that is actually a good thing. But in this case, maybe we're not ready, I don't, I don't know.
You're saying if they change the entire area, that large complexes come in, fifty or sixty units, where this would limit it to a duplex?
Yeah, which maybe fits in better, or doesn't change, wholesale change the neighborhood, but then it would begin piecemeal change, which there's no control.
Yeah, and I'd like to see the neighbors who have invested thirty, forty years out there. You know, this plan was done in 2006, I'm sure, as invested as they are, they were at the table with input. Hmm, oh, and, you know, maybe let them help design it, see what they thought the intention was of the plan, when they did all that good work.
I'm going to move deferral for two meetings.
Second. A motion second to defer two meetings, is that, we need to check the applicant's approval.
There's not a bill, so.
Okay. All right, motion second to defer two meetings, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
What do we hope to happen before he comes back?
I'm not sure.
I think he said that the intent was to, to work with the house next door, and they're trying to find a place to relocate the gentleman who lives there, so perhaps in that period of time, that gives them the wiggle room to, to do that.
Can I also add just a comment, that, you know, the applicant may want to meet with the neighbors and come up with a design or something that everyone can live with? Because I think you're hearing from the commission, we're not comfortable moving forward without neighborhood input.
And support.
I understand.
Scott Davis.
Oh, Scott Davis.
Thank you. Did we vote on it? No. Oh, we didn't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did.
Got a motion second, I'll vote right.
We did.
No, we did, we voted.
A vote is not recorded.
Oh, okay. Just vote again, because Kelly doesn't have it.
Okay, is the motion second to defer two meetings, all in favor? Any opposed? Same vote we had before. Okay, we are, we'll now take items two, A, B, and C together, and then item two, D will be heard separately.
This is item two on your agenda. This is a request for periodic review of sites fourteen, fifteen, twenty-five, and twenty-seven within the Nashville Village PUD, and this has been requested by council member Johnson. And the four areas that are under review are outlined in red. What I'll do is, I'll give a brief description of the plan itself, and then a description of the, the PUD review process, and then take sites fourteen, fifteen, and twenty-seven together, and then there'll be a public hearing, and then I'll do site twenty-five separately. So, I'm going to start with an overall of the PUD. The Nashville Village PUD was originally approved by the Metro Council in 1979 and is located between Murphysboro Pike and Bell Road south, Bell Road, south of Smith Springs Road in the Antioch area of Davidson County. The PUD was divided into twenty-eight development sites, which have been developed in phases over time. Portions of the PUD have been revised and the master plan updated a number of times. This is the 2001 master plan, again, with the four sites circled. The PUD is approved for a range of housing types, a daycare center, commercial uses, and recreational facilities. The main recreational facilities include a golf course, which is a central feature of the PUD, and a tennis facility. This PUD is within the Antioch Presulate Community Plan, and the land use policy in place is residential medium. This policy supports a variety of housing types with a density range of four to nine dwelling units per acre. The Nashville Village PUD covers approximately 393 acres with twenty-four, 2,475 residential units for an overall density of 6.3 units per acre. The zoning code or authorizes a council member to request and the Metro Planning Commission to review any PUD or portion of a PUD to determine whether it is inactive, and if so, to recommend to the council what action should be taken with respect to the PUD. The commission is first required to determine whether a portion of the PUD under review is active or inactive by examining whether development activity has occurred. If it's found to be inactive, then the, the planning commission will make a recommendation to the council to maintain, amend, or cancel the PUD. The Metro Code requires the planning commission to make three findings in order to determine whether a PUD has been active or inactive. First, that more than six years have occurred since the last council action approval, approving the PUD, or an amendment to the PUD, that construction activity has occurred, and that includes physical improvements such as water and sewer line installation and foundation pouring and elements such as those, or that right-of-way has been acquired or an off-site improvement required as a condition of approval has been made. The code also provides that the commission may take into consideration the aggregate of activities, if any, taken by the owner of the PUD within the prior twelve months to develop the portion of the PUD under review. If the planning commission determines that a portion of the PUD under review is active, then no further action is required for that portion of the PUD. If the commission determines that the portion of the PUD is inactive, then the commission is required to recommend legislation to the council based on whether the existing PUD is consistent with the policies, goals, and objectives of the general plan, and any applicable specific redevelopment historic neighborhood or community plans. And then, the commission can recommend that the PUD be maintained as approved, that the PUD be amended, or the PUD be canceled and rezone the property as needed. The zoning code requires that within ninety days from the initiation of the review, the planning commission must hold a public hearing to make a determination of activity, and if necessary, make a recommendation to the council. The review for sites fourteen and fifteen was initiated on March first, and the ninety-day period extends to May thirtieth. And the review for sites twenty-five and twenty-seven were initiated on March twelfth, and the ninety-day period extends to June tenth. If the planning commission does not make a determination within ninety days from the initiation of the review, it will be considered that a recommendation was made to reapprove by ordinance the existing PUD overlay district without alteration. This is the review for site fourteen of Nashville Village PUD. Site fourteen is located at the southeast corner of Nashville Boulevard and Flintlock Court. It is approved for 144 multifamily units in two six-story buildings. And this is the approved plan for site fourteen. Staff made a site visit in March, there was no evidence of development activity, activity on the portion of this PUD, and a letter was sent to the property owner asking for documentation of activity. There had been no amendments since 1979, there are no infrastructure improvements on the property, and no acquisition or construction of off-site improvements had been made. And while the applicant, or the owner, provided a series of emails discussing the potential of assisted living on the property, and had provided an undated markets, marketing study, this was not seen as sufficient documentation that the site was active, and the recommendation is to find site fourteen of the Nashville Village PUD to be inactive. Now, that the, if the PUD is, if the planning commission agrees that the PUD is inactive, then it has to look at whether or not this PUD is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan, and the existing PUD meets the density limits of the current RM policy, and staff would recommend, recommend that this PUD be maintained as In 2007, the district council member that time requested that this portion of the PUD be canceled. The planning commission recommended disapproval of that request, as the planning commission agreed that the portion of the overall PUD, this site fourteen, is, is consistent with the land use policy. And if the planning commission finds the PUD is inactive, then staff recommends that the PUD be maintained as approved. And that's for site fourteen. And this is site fifteen of the Nashville Village PUD. And this site is located at the southwest corner of Nashville Boulevard and Flintlock Court. It's approved for approximately seven, 27,600 square feet of commercial uses. This is the preliminary plan for site fifteen. Site fifteen was originally approved for sixty-one residential units, and in 1983, the PUD was revised. The commercial development originally proposed for site twenty-four across Nashville Village Boulevard from site fifteen was replaced with sixty-four units, and the neighborhood commercial development was moved to site fifteen. Staff made a visit in March, and there was no evidence of development activity on this portion of the PUD. And again, a letter was sent to the property owner asking for documentation of activity, and there was no documentation provided, that there'd been no amendment since 1979, there were no infrastructure improvements made, and there'd been no acquisition or construction of off-site improvements for this property, and no documentation of activity over the past twelve months was provided. And staff recommends that this PUD be found inactive. Then, the recommendation to council, again, has to be based on consistency with the plans in place, and the land use policy on this property is residential medium. And again, in 2007, the former council member requested that this portion of the PUD be canceled and that the R-ten base zoning remain in place. At that time, the planning commission recommended that the PUD remain in place, as the centrally-located neighborhood commercial development in this primarily residential PUD is an important, important element in the concept of the Nashville Village as a master plan community. In addition, neighborhood commercial use is a center, provides a center that can provide additional neighborhood amenities to meet the daily convenience needs for residents in the area and provide for a place to socialize and gather. And the concept behind the location of this commercial area complies with accepted planning principles and is the same concept used to determine appropriate locations for community and neighborhood centers throughout Davidson County. As there are a few details in the preliminary approval, in order to develop this neighborhood commercial site, a revision to the preliminary PUD will be necessary. At that time, staff will work with the applicant to ensure that any development will contribute to the overall PUD by providing neighborhood services at an appropriate scale that also contributes to the walkability of the area. This can be accomplished by having the buildings framing the street with entrances oriented to the street, locating parking behind or beside the building, and ensuring the development is well-connected to other portions of the PUD with sidewalks. And so, the recommendation that staff is making is, if the planning commission agrees that the PUD is inactive, to maintain the PUD as approved, and as this will require a revision to the development plan, direct staff to work with the applicant to ensure the development plan provides neighborhood services at an appropriate scale and design that also contributes to the walkability of the area. And this is site twenty-seven of the Nashville Village PUD. It's located on Nashville Boulevard, approximately 1,500 feet east of Murphysboro Pike, and it is approved for a daycare center. This is the preliminary approval of the site, and a visit was made in March, and again, there was no evidence of activity on this portion of the PUD, and a letter was sent to the property owner asking for documentation of activity. There was no amendments made since 1979, no infrastructure improvements have been made, and no acquisition or construction of off-site improvements had been made. And no documentation was provided that any activity had taken over the twelve months, and staff recommends that the, that the PUD be found to be inactive. Again, in looking at the land use policy, the land use policy is the residential medium, and a daycare center is supported by the policy in the base zoning district. The services are properly located within, in this primarily residential PUD. And if the planning commission finds that the PUD is inactive, then staff recommends that the PUD be maintained as approved. Those are the three sites.
Councilwoman Johnson, you're the applicant, you'll be allowed ten minutes, and I think you have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Chair McLean. Good afternoon, Secretary Bernhardt, and all of you esteemed commissioners, I'm Councilwoman Karen Johnson. And very excited to be here this afternoon with a lot of my neighbors from Nashville Village. I just want everyone to kind of stand, to let everyone see how many people came out from our community at this time of the day, and to let you know. from our community at this time of the day, and to let you know how important this is to the community. I do have a presentation that's really short. Let me see if I can get to the beginning. And one of the things that we want to accomplish today is to just kind of give you a visual of what the Nashboro Village community is dealing with in terms of the development activity. Over the course of the last several months, I have met with the presidents of each of these areas within the Nashboro Village area, the Fairways, the Fairways Point, Lakeside Villas, the Greens, Woodridge, Fairway Villas, Nashboro Woods. I also met with Milestone Management, the company representative for all of the apartment communities, Center Court Apartments, Village Hills Apartments, Deerfield Apartments, Doubletree Apartments, and Village Green Apartments. I also have spoken to the most recently approved development, Nashboro Village Town Homes Development with Ms. Kathy Dodd and Woodbine Community Organization. So we're all in communication with regard to this PUD, and we hope to make more smart decisions going forward as to the direction in this area so that our quality of life can continue to be maintained and improved if possible. The first slide that I want to show you is, kind of, you didn't have this on the staff slide presentation, but this is typically what people see every day around the Pond property, which is referenced as Site 14. So you see the little ducks there, and there are signs throughout the community that say "Duck Crossing," and so a lot of people actually use this portion of Nashboro Village as somewhat of a park. As you can see, it is maintained, and the reason that that's maintained is, of all of these developments within Nashboro Village, they all are under one umbrella called the Nashboro Master Association. And that's where all of the residents of this area pay into this Master Association a fee, and they maintain the properties throughout Nashboro Village. And they, right now, are actually maintaining the property here that you see. This site, people are aware that the two six-story buildings were proposed for development, and I just wanted to kind of give you a visual of what's around that. So as you move forward and looking at the decisions that you make, you kind of see what the density is around that area. But one of the things that was pointed out was that your staff came to this site and determined that there was no activity as of April 16, 2012. So in summary to this site, planning staff made a site visit to this location in March of this year. There was no evidence of development activity on this portion of the PUD, and no documentation was provided to determine activity. Of course, the second slide that I showed you where the ducks were, that was taken actually on May 20th, which further shows no evidence of development activity to date. And in summary, the planning staff determined this parcel was inactive on April 16, 2012. Therefore, we request that you, the planning commissioners, uphold the staff recommendation that this portion of the PUD remain inactive. For the second site, Site 15, which is the commercial development building that was proposed, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of where that was in reference to the other surrounding developments and the Pond property. This is a recent snapshot and view, kind of at two different angles of this same property where this commercial proposal is being made. Planning staff made a site visit to this location in March, and again, there was no evidence of development activity on this portion of the PUD, and no documentation was provided to determine activity. So in summary, we request that the planning commissioners, you all uphold the staff recommendation that this portion of the PUD remain inactive. Site 25 is what we reference in the area as the golf course maintenance building. It's a green maintenance building currently in operation for the golf course. As you can see, it's located off the main thoroughfare, Bell Road, it sits behind the golf course.
That's under D. Yeah, Councilwoman, that one will come up under D.
Oh, that's the next one. I'm sorry. You're right.
And then go back and run it.
You're right. I'm sorry. I'll go ahead and move past that one. The other site that you're looking at making a decision on this set of parcels is Site 27, which is the daycare, and this is just giving you another view of what's around that at the present. Planning staff made a site visit to this location in March. There was no evidence of development activity on this portion of the PUD, and no documentation was provided to determine activity. And so in summary, we request that the planning commission uphold the staff recommendation, finding that this portion of the PUD remain inactive as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Come forward, give us your name, and just please don't repeat what's been said before, if you would.
Good evening Chairman McLean, Commissioners. I am Nigel Hyde. I am president of the Woodridge Homeowners Association, as well as a member of the Steering Committee. First of all, on behalf of my neighbors, I would like to thank you for your, for the sacrifice of your time. As many of us are planning our Memorial Day trips, you all are here still working to better the city, so thank you very much, first and foremost, for that. We are here to request that you concur with the Planning Department's staff recommendation regarding the three PUDs just mentioned within Nashboro Village. Again, all of these PUDs were found to be inactive, which was based on a visit, an actual site visit made by the staff. Clearly, based on the staff's recommendation, there was absolutely no evidence of any store or any type of development activity. We also must take into consideration that each property owner did receive a letter from the staff requesting documentation of any type of activity, which those were never addressed, no documentation was never communicated to the staff. Moreover, three of the lots provided by, three of the lots are actually maintained by the Nashboro Master Association. I'm a member of the Nashboro Master Association. This is personal as well. The owners not only have to pay a yearly, a monthly association fee for their individual communities, but also an annual fee to the Master Association. So again, that comes from the funds of the hard-working people within this community. I say all that to say that not only do the property owners here not have sufficient evidence of any type of development activity, but they do not even maintain the lots for which they own. Undoubtedly, Commissioners, the evidence is extremely straightforward regarding the inactivity of these four PUDs. Again, it is for all of these reasons that we respectfully request that you, the Commissioners, concur with the staff recommendation and find these three PUDs to be inactive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? That's in support of the applicant.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, and thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Elizabeth Hembry, and I'm here to represent Fairway Villas, which is in Nashboro Village. On behalf of my residents, I would like to thank you for your dedication to our wonderful city as well. As you can see, after your site visit on March 12th, the planning staff found these parcels inactive. I'm not going to go site by site again, but as you could see site by site on this last presentation, they are found inactive, and there was no documentation provided by the property owners. So hence, we are asking that you make the obvious decision and support the staff's recommendation of inactivity on all four of the above parcels. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Natasha Malaxhere, and I've been living in Nashboro Village for the last 12 years, and on behalf of my fellow residents, I'd like to say thank you for your dedication to the city of Nashville. I would like to say this is probably one of the easiest decisions, trying to figure out whether these PUDs are active or inactive. As has been explained, each of the owners was sent a certified letter letting them know about the review. The owners did not provide documentation to show that there was activity, and after the site visit, the planning department staff found that the parcels, the PUDs, were inactive. And as well as a resident of Nashboro Village, I pay an annual fee to the Master Association, and the Master Association maintains and cuts the grass on these parcels, and this further demonstrates the lack of activity by the property owners. While I do agree that the PUD should be found inactive, which is a very easy and obvious decision, the recommendation that the PUD should keep the zoning that they currently have, I disagree with. The zoning should be a lower density than how the base zoning is currently zoned. Most people who live in Nashboro Village would say that it's been built up a lot in the past 10 years, to the point that there's just a lot of different communities there that it wasn't planned well, and having two six-story buildings there will not go with the village the way it is currently. It's mostly townhomes and families who brought into what I brought into 12 years ago, which was trees. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Please line up the microphone.
Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you. I appreciate your time. And my name is Jobeth Hastings. I'm a resident in Nashboro Woods, which is one of the sub-associations. I'm also on the board of the Masters Association. This is a wonderful community, and we're trying to maintain a direction and a vision that we have lined up, and we are asking that you accept the recommendation of your staff to keep it inactive, and give us an opportunity to look at the futures, look at possible zonings and opportunities that might be made available to us in the future, and help let us drive our direction.
Good evening Chairman McLean, and the Honorable Members of the Planning Commission. I'm Vivian Willholt. I'm a resident of District 29. I live at 1029 Flintlock Court, which is in the Nashboro Woods location in the Nashboro Golf and Tennis Community. I am a member of the, I'm not a member of the Steering Committee, but I do come before you as a citizen with a great interest in the immediate community, mainly due to the owning of a home in that specific area for the past 15 years. I ask that you support the planning staff's recommendation for the planning and development properties 14, 15, 25, and 27 to be deemed inactive. Although legislation established during my tenure on the council in 2007 states that these properties have to be inactive for at least six years, in fact, these properties have been inactive for development for the past 40 years to date. In addition, the staff's finding the recommendation of inactive on these PUDs are proper and in order. However, I do not support the planning staff's additional recommendation of extending these PUDs, specifically PUD 14, 15, and 27. The spirit of the review is to review PUDs to decide if they're inactive or active, and to establish a balanced recommendation to the Metro Council that should be a win-win in the community and the owners of the inner core PUDs 14, 15, and 27. Our community has passionately expressed before this board on at least four occasions that lower density and the zoning that better fits today's environment would be in the better interest of everyone involved. With that said, I'm of the opinion that, one, declare all the PUDs inactive, two, that the PUD zoning should be removed or be amended to a specific plan, SP in agreement with the community, and, three, rezone the base zoning of PUDs 14, 15, and 27 to the lower residential density like RS10 should be seriously explored. In closing, find the four PUDs inactive, but to the extent, the PUDs only, but to the extent, to extend the PUDs, excuse me, only promotes the owner's interest for PUDs 14, 15, and 27, and does not promote the community's interest of lower density. There must be a balanced decision. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wishing to speak, if you line up behind each other the microphone?
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm Ken Renner. I represent Bass Land Companies. We are the majority owner of each of these properties, and I'm here representing the ownership group. Before I begin, Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify...
If you would, let me take anybody that's in support first. Are you in support?
Well, actually, we are.
Okay.
Before I begin, though, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify whether we have the opportunity to speak for two minutes on each of these as the property owner, or speak for two minutes on the entire three.
I'll leave that up to the Commissioners. We can give you two minutes on A, B, and C, and then two minutes on D if you're owner of it.
That's what I don't understand.
Two minutes for total for A, B, and C, sensory package, and then two minutes for D, which...
Okay, we are not an owner of D, so... All right, I'll try to be brief then. First of all, we would like to reluctantly support the staff recommendation on inactivity, because we recognize that due to the economic conditions, like many other developments across the state and across the county, we have been inactive under the specific technical definition in the ordinance. We would very, very much like to be active. There is no one who would like to be active more than we would in terms of developing these properties. In fact, since we've owned the undeveloped parcels at Nashboro, we have developed over 750 housing units out there, so it's not like we're just sitting on the land. We are trying to develop the properties. Secondly, I would like to very wholeheartedly endorse and request that the commission affirm the zoning and the integrity of this PUD as the staff has recommended. This is now, I guess, the second time in five years that I've come before this commission to defend the property rights of the ownership group here. We have told the community before that zoning this property differently without our consent will cost our company almost $20 million. We think that figure is fairly conservative, and each time this has come up, it has really questioned the integrity of whether the planning and zoning process for property owners, for property developers, can be relied on in this city. We bought this property with certain property rights. We intend to develop with those property rights, and we would hope that the commission would reaffirm our reliance on its agenda. Thank you.
One question.
Sir?
Do y'all pay into the management fees on this property?
Yes, sir, we do. We pay a portion of the management fees. We are an owner out there, just like everyone else.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? If you're going to speak, please line up behind the, behind each other the microphones so we can serve time for the Commissioners.
Good evening Commissioners. I'm Iris Flag, and I live in the Antioch community with Nashboro Village. And on behalf of my, of the residents there, we'd like to thank you very much for your decision to make, your dedication to this wonderful city for one. We do appreciate that. The decision on these four parcels is probably one of the easiest and actually the right decision to be made. On behalf of those residents, I'm requesting that you agree with the staff recommendation that these PUDs are inactive. You've now seen up to date pictures of these parcels. It is quite clear, from a visual perspective, that there is no development activity that has taken place on any of these parcels. It is true that there could be other activity that has taken place, I'm sorry, on these parcels. It is true that there could be other infrastructure in place, which would not be reflected in those pictures. This would include, for example, underground, sewage, water lines, pipes, and et cetera. However, each of the property owners did not receive, did receive a certified letter from the planning, development staff after the review, and were unable to produce sufficient evidence of the development activity. evidence of the development activity. Because of this lack of activity demonstrated from the property owners of these parcels, we please ask that you agree and make that easy decision with the staff's recommendation for these PUDs to be inactive. And I do thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for your time and listening to me. My name is Sam Neal. I'm vice president of the Nashboro Greens Homeowners Association. You've heard from a number of members and residents of this community. And based on Councilwoman's presentation, you have seen that these parcels of land that we're speaking about right now have been undeveloped. They have not been touched. They have been maintained by the community, however, in the status that they're in today. We do ask that the Planning Commission agree with the staff recommendation to find these PUDs inactive. Thank you.
Anyone else add anything that hadn't been said before? Is anybody here in support or in opposition to finding these inactive? Here's a motion to close the public hearing. Motion, is there a second? Motion, second, close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Councilman Claiborne.
Well, based on the evidence that we've seen, that there is clearly no activity that's taken here for some great period of time, and the council lady's recommendation, the community's support, and even the representative, the owner of the property, I see no reason why we shouldn't find this to be inactive and to approve it since it's consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives.
That's your motion.
Well, I hate to make a motion before anybody else has a chance to.
Do you have a comment? Phil?
I agree wholeheartedly with his comments.
Judy?
I have to comment, just because there's a second half of the sentence that continue to be implemented as adopted. Do we want to open up that part of the discussion at all, or is that what we're here to talk
You can vote, you've got six issues. You can vote separately, or you can vote-
No, I'm talking about the, if the staff recommendation was found inactive, which we're all unanimously agreeing on, no problem. And the second part is that the PUD continue to be implemented as adopted.
For each of the three, you have a decision as to whether it's active or inactive, and if it's active, you have no further decision. If you find it inactive, then you have to decide whether to continue it as is, or if you don't want to continue it as is, you have to make a recommendation as to what it should be rezoned to.
So, right now, we're only talking about active or inactive?
I'm just looking at the staff's recommendation. It says that it's, that it's, if it's, if the PUD is found to be inactive, staff recommends that the PUD be maintained as approved in that it is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan. So, I'm recommending that we follow the staff's recommendation.
Is there a second? Motion, second. Any other comments? All in favor? Hunter?
Yeah, I guess I just didn't, if it's inconsistent with the plan, then do we have any place to discuss whether it's to be remaining the same as adopted or not? I mean, continue to be implemented as adopted?
I think the staff's recommendation suggests that these, on these three parcels, it is consistent with the, with the plan. And therefore, they're, and therefore, they're recommending, but you're-
Well, I'm just curious. I mean, it's like we'd have to get into a whole rezoning issue if we're going to say, well, if we had to recommend what it should be instead of this without a public meeting and discussion, I don't think we can really do that. I mean, I think it's the sort of thing that's a major question that the public has to have input on. I mean, we can't just sort of say, well, it should be this, I don't think.
We heard, I think, one community member suggest that it should revert back to the base zoning, which surprisingly is, is a very low-density, single-family residential zoning.
I just got a sense that people, there was a number, there were a number of people that were wishing that it would change, but I also heard the property right of the owners. I don't think we can get into that debate without a public hearing, I mean, a public input meeting. So, I think I'm saying that I agree that it should stay this way. I just want to bring it up, be sure we're all clear on what we're talking about. Okay.
Second, comment?
I was just going to comment that that was, that was part of the purpose of the public hearing that was had today, to address both parts of the recommendation, whether or not it's going to be inactive or not, and whether or not it's going to be, whether or not the recommendation, if it is found to be inactive, should be to reapprove, amend, or to cancel. And there were things that were said today by persons that were in the audience and spoke to the board that would address both of those. But it's, it's the pleasure of the board as to how they want to, how they want to vote, or what the motion should be, if the motion could be for them to, for you to make a move such that it's inclusive of both of those. And I think that was the discussion, I think, that Councilman Claiborne and Commissioner Potter were having. But in hearing what you're saying, you could also move them one at a time. It's really the pleasure of the board as to whether you move on both of them in one motion, or if you take them as separate motions and then make a separate recommendation that follows. Does that make sense?
Well, and that, if that were the case, could we, could we unravel them and say that we wanted to defer the second decision until there's community input?
You cannot defer because the ordinance requires the commission to act within 90 days. The council lady had requested it to be deferred to today, and the 90 days are up.
For two of them at the end of the, this month, and then June 10th, and you don't have another meeting until June 14th.
And so, if the commission doesn't act, then the decision is to approve this remaining the way it is, basically, is what it is.
The code actually reads, failure of the planning commission to act within 90 days from the initiation of a review shall be considered a recommendation to reapprove by ordinance the existing PUD overlay district without alteration.
The motion is second, is for collectively for A, B, and C, and to vote to find them inactive but to maintain the PUD. Is that correct?
Yes, follow the staff's approval.
Yeah, the staff recommendation, and it did have, the staff recommendation had some things that were there as it came back that dealt with the positioning of the buildings and some things like that, so. We understood that your motion was to recommend staff recommendation.
The staff recommendation, right.
Andre, is it?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, got a motion, second. I'll repeat that, is to find sites 14, 15, and 27 inactive and to maintain the PUD as approved.
I can clarify with this additional staff recommendations.
Correct. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now take item 2D.
Okay. I'm not going to repeat what I said about the process or the overall plan. I'm going to go right into this portion. This is the periodic review of Site 25 of the Nashboro Village PUD. This site is located on a portion of property located at 171 Bell Road. It's actually part of the golf course property. It's in the same parcel. It was approved for 100 units in a five-story building. And this, again, is the preliminary plan for Site 25. Staff did make a visit to this property, and at this time, there is a golf course maintenance building. This building has been in place since 1974. The permits were issued in 1974, so it does predate the planned unit development, which was adopted in 1979. A letter was sent to the property owner asking for documentation of activity, and we didn't get a response. So, there was no amendment since 1979, no infrastructure improvements, and no acquisition or construction of offsite improvements, and again, no documentation provided of any activities in the prior 12 months. And so, staff is recommending that this PUD be found to be inactive. Again, looking at the goals, policies, and objectives of the plan, while the RM policy supports the multifamily use when the entire PUD is considered, this particular location does not appear to be appropriate for a five-story structure. It's isolated from the remaining development in the PUD, and a five-story structure is inconsistent with the development pattern along Bell Road. When the maintenance facility is no longer located on the site, this portion of the PUD could be considered appropriate for residential uses at a scale consistent with the development pattern along Bell Road. And so, staff is making the recommendation that if the PUD is found to be active, that this portion of the PUD be amended to remove the five-story building, and a note be added to the PUD that residential uses not to exceed the 100 units that are permitted now, but are consistent with the scale of the development along Bell Road within this PUD could be considered as a future revision to the PUD. And again, here's a view of the, what's on the property at this time.
Thank you.
Okay. Going back to Site 25, of course, what I'm attempting to show you here is what is surrounding the golf maintenance building that you just saw in the picture that staff showed. So, if you see kind of across the street, those are single-family homes. And we have another shot here, which is on up the other end of Bell Road. Those are single-family homes as well. And so, again, planning staff made a site visit to this location in March. There was no evidence of development activity on this portion of the PUD, and no documentation was provided to determine activity. In summary, we request that the planning commission uphold the staff recommendation that this portion of the PUD remain inactive. And in regards to the second portion, in terms of the amendment, we're in agreement with that as well. Thank you.
Anyone else like to add anything that council lady hasn't covered?
I was just giving a note to, and I guess this is something that I would have to get clarification from Vastland, that the record may be made known that they do not pay into the master associations for sites 14, 15, and 27. But as part of the process, Commissioner LaGuire, that you were questioning on the second portion, we are going to make a good faith effort to work with the staff and the developer in trying to come to a win-win in terms of the lower-density development for the area, for those three parcels.
Thank you, Chairman McLean. And Honorable Members, when I spoke earlier, I'm Vivian Willhoyt. And again, I'm a resident of District 29. I live in the Nashboro Woods Community of the Nashville Golf and Tennis Community. I live at 1029 Flintlock Court. Once again, I come as a citizen that is, has a vested interest in this area because I live there, my, raised my fam, raised my family, I guess, including my husband, as well, at that location, and we love the community. I did speak earlier in reference to 15, 25, and 14, but I would like to just ask for your support in reference to the site number 25 to be deemed inactive. Although the legislations, I stated before, that we're using today has come across in 2007, we have not seen any activity on this property for the past 40 years. The findings by the planning staff commission definitely would be, would be, of course, proper and in order that it's inactive. But I also like to be on record that I further agree with the staff recommendation in reference to the removal of the two-story buildings that is not, that is not consistent with the, the immediate surroundings. When you think about the fact that, how it is, how it is, how it looks today, that is not consisting with the present area as we see it today. But also further agree that, you know, given the opportunity for possibly 100 units later on, because this is in the outer core of the Nashboro Village and Golf Community. It is in the outer core, so it doesn't have a direct impact on the inner core of the Nashboro Village Golf and Tennis Community where there is PUD 15, 14, and 27. So, I just thank you so much, and I appreciate your accepting the staff recommendation of both the inactivity and on the recommendation of possibly allowing, removing the two-story building and allowing the 100 units at a later date for parcel number 25.
And you mean the five-story building?
Five-story building, excuse me. Thank you so much. Appreciate you, Reverend Covens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else add anything that hadn't been stated before? Motion to close the public hearing. Motion, second, close the public hearing. All in favor? Aye. Andre?
I guess this is a question for the legal counsel. Could the golf course owner sell this track separately within the PUD?
I don't know that the PUD would restrict any ownership rights that they would have with regard to transfer or conveyance of the property.
I assume-
I haven't, I haven't read the PUD.
I assume this entity, Nashboro Golf Course LLC, is the owner of the golf course and therefore owns-
Correct.
-this track.
I have to defer to the staff on that.
They do, and, I mean, I don't know if it's a separate parcel. If it is, they could obviously sell it off. It has frontage, but it would have to comply with the conditions of the PUD.
Hunter? Judy?
No comment.
Phil?
One clarification there. Did the new owner of the golf course also buy this tract of land? Is that what you're saying?
This piece of property is actually part of a larger parcel that is the golf course. And I did confirm that the owner of the golf course also owned this part because it's right now used as a facility for the golf course. It is their maintenance building.
Okay. If we take action here today, it does not affect this building? I mean, this building can, we don't have anything to do with this golf shed building.
This golf shed has, as I said, was permitted in 1974, and as far as I know, it's been there since.
Okay, and we're not going to affect it?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I guess since everybody else has passed or made their comments, I'll just go ahead and move that we find this portion of the PUD inactive, and that we amend the PUD to remove the five-story building, and add the note that residential uses not to exceed 100 units that are consistent with the scale of development be considered for future revision.
Second. Got a motion, second. Any other comment? Any other comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, just so everyone understands, and the council lady, this is, I think, the first time we've recommended an amendment to the PUD. So, this is from the planning commission, purely a recommendation to the council, and the council will need to take action to initiate an amendment. Right?
We need to take A and vote on those together, him together, or they separate?
Joni, we're going to do these together. We're going to do it together. We'll make the votes separate. We do need to vote separate.
Okay.
No, because if you, if you don't approve A, then you wouldn't get the-
Hey, Joni, in the ordinance, we will be hearing the staff presentation on item A and B, but the Commissioners will discuss and vote on those separately.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Joni Priest. I'm the staff reviewer for 31st and Long Urban Design Overlay, and I'll be presenting 111 Ackland Park Drive. The request is to rezone from multifamily RM 40 to a specific plan zoning for the Westmont Apartments located at 111 Ackland Park Drive. You'll be considering two items today, 5A and 5B. 5A is the SP request, and 5B are modifications to the UDO standards. The UDO will stay in place, and the SP will change the underlying zoning. So, there are some modification requests to the UDO standards that go along with the zone change request. Staff is recommending approval on 5A and 5- Staff is recommending approval on 5A and 5B. 5A with the conditions of the preliminary SP, including any requirements from the traffic impact study and additional requirements from Public Works, or disapproval without all conditions. And 5B, staff recommends approval to the requested modifications of the UDO standard, provided you are recommending approval for the preliminary SP. The site is just off West End, in the West End Park neighborhood. You can see West End Avenue there on the lower right-hand corner, the I-440 loop on the left side of the screen, and this is a rather large parcel on Ackland Park Drive.
I didn't realize that was large.
The zoning is currently RM40, and it's adjacent to OR20 and ORI office uses and residential uses. The policy is T4 urban neighborhood evolving, and in addition to the policies of T4 urban neighborhood evolving, the Midtown Study states that residential densities in this area may be higher than typical for T4 NE areas, because the area's Midtown location and support role in providing a planned high level of public and private mass transit services. The request is consistent with the policy. This is another zoning map that shows you in the yellow outline, the urban design overlay boundaries. You'll see the RM40 parcel is highlighted with a green outline, and it is right at the edge of the UDO. This is an aerial view of the property. It's currently two- and three-story apartment structures with an amenity area in the center of the site and surface parking surrounding. Ackland Park Drive is in the upper right-hand corner of this photo, Fairmont Drive in the lower left, kind of the curving street, or, excuse me, the lower right, the curving street. You'll see on the upper left-hand corner is an interior property line, and also on the lower left-hand corner is an interior property line. Those will be important here in just a second. So here's a view from Ackland Park Drive, two- and three-story structures with surface This is a view of Fairmont Drive, where there's currently no curb and gutter, no sidewalk, and sort of informal haphazard parking. The important thing to note in this photo is that the shot that you're looking at is from the lower end of Fairmont Drive, near the intersection of Fairmont and Ackland Park Drive, and there's some serious topography on the site. It rises about 12 feet or 15 feet from the lowest part of Fairmont to the highest part of Fairmont. This is looking back down Fairmont Drive from the high side towards the property. The UDO is divided into sub-districts regulating different forms. This is in Subdistrict G2, has a front build-to zone, requiring at least 80% of the building be within 20 feet of the property line. So instead of having a setback, it has a build-to zone. It also allows that stoops and porches may encroach in front of that build-to line. So the building has to be at 20 feet, but stoops and porches can come forward of that 20 feet, up to 10 feet from the property line. The maximum height in the G2 sub-district is four stories to a maximum height of 50 feet. That's measured to the bottom of the eve, if it's a slope roof or the top of the parapet. The RM40 zoning would, for this large site, would yield 148 units, and the impervious surface of RM40 is allowed to be 75%. This is the site plan. This has been updated just in the last couple of days, so I'm going to run through some changes for you that are different than the site plan that you saw in your staff report. The plan does meet several of the critical planning goals of the Planning Commission, including creating walkable neighborhoods, supporting a variety of transit choices, supporting a range of housing choices, supporting infill development, and promoting compact building design. Changes to the site plan have been made based on comments from staff, from the Design Review Committee of the 31st and Long Urban Design Overlay, and also from community input. That includes, on the lower part of the plan, you'll see a service lane. One of the features of the urban design overlay was asking for a connection from Long Boulevard down to Fairmont. You'll also see that the original site plan had only an access drive from the parking structure out to Ackland Park Drive, and this was a significant concern from staff and also from the Design Review Committee, asking the applicant to include a second driveway, or, excuse me, a second access to the parking structure, instead of having everything coming in and out of one point. So the service lane was included, and also a second point off of that to access the drive, or access the parking structure. There's also been an addition of bicycle parking in the parking garage for tenants, and at the main entrance for visitors. There's been an increase in the side setback on the interior property line, which is on the left of the screen, from 5 feet, which the UDO in the base zoning allows, to a minimum of 15 feet. There's also been an addition of 60 parking spaces, for a total of 477. This is the illustration in the 31st and Long UDO that shows that connection from the top of Long Boulevard down to Fairmont. The intersection of those two streets, of Ackland Park Drive and Long Boulevard, is a four-way stop, and currently, if you were to go up the hill on Long Boulevard, it's a dead end. There's a kind of a, not a cul-de-sac, but it's just an unfinished street at that point. And so the UDO had illustrated what it would possibly look like to continue that street down to Fairmont to improve connectivity in the neighborhood. And again, the site plan shows that connection coming through. This is an illustrative rendering that has also been changed slightly since community meetings have been held. This is updated to show the type of architecture that this may be and the materials that may be used. The SP does not include standards for architecture or materials, rather, the project will comply with the standards of the UDO. The UDO has material and architectural standards, and so this is an illustrative rendering to show what it may look like. This is the intersection of Ackland Park Drive and Fairmont. You see Ackland being mainly level towards the right of the screen, and Fairmont having that significant hill up the left. There'll be a main entrance into the structure at the corner, and then you can see, if you look closely in this image, there are stoops along Ackland Park Drive to allow individual access into those ground floor units. So I'm going to take these backwards for you. 5B are the modifications to the UDO standards. The application is asking for a change in the front build-to line from 20 feet to 5 to 15 feet on Ackland Park Drive and 5 to 20 feet on Fairmont. Excuse me. This modification would allow the mass of the building, stoops and porches, to undulate between 5 and 15 feet from the property line. This is, in a sense, similar to what the UDO requires, but the UDO would require the building to be back at 20. This would allow it to go back and forth between 5 and 15. The maximum height of habitable space, the request is to change from four stories within 50 feet to four stories within 58 feet, and in specific locations identified on the plan, five stories within 70 feet. You have the updated copy of the plan in front of you, and you can see the five stories are highlighted in that area. It's harder to see on the screen, but if you look at it on the paper, you'll see where they've indicated that five stories would be allowed. They're also asking for a modification for the parking structure to change from four stories within 50 feet to six stories within 75, or 70 feet. And you'll have to pardon, this slide is a little bit out of date, because they have, in addition to being able to expand their parking structure, they've actually lowered it. They've made the footprint of the garage a little bigger, so this would be five and a half stories. They've been able to cut it down just a little bit. The standards of the SP would allow a density of 347 units with at least 417 parking spaces, though the revised plan does show 477. The existing zoning would yield 148, and the SP also requests to allow up to 90% impervious The community involvement for this project has been twofold. The 31st and Long Design Review Committee met in April and reviewed the project. Many of the comments and questions and concerns were integrated into the application. And then also, last week, Counsel Lady Langster, she told you, had a community meeting, and there was a good turnout at that meeting, and the comments have been integrated in the plan that you see today. There remain outstanding concerns that Counsel Lady has committed to following through with during the zone change process. Again, staff recommends approval of the preliminary SP with the conditions, including Public Works additional comments related to the traffic impact study, and then also recommends approval of the modifications to the UDO with the approval of the preliminary SP. With that, I'm finished.
Just leave that on the screen there.
Okay.
The, this, the item is on-
Did you say anything about closing the alley?
No, sorry. They're adding an alley.
Adding the alley, okay.
Yes. They're adding a connection from Long Boulevard to Fairmont.
Okay.
There is no alley on the site currently.
Okay.
So there, on the lower part of the screen, you see a connection from Long Boulevard down to Fairmont.
Okay, thank you.
The item's open for public hearing. After it be allowed, 10 minutes, and you can keep two minutes out at the back for rebuttal if you'd like.
Mr. McLean, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. There'll be three of us to speak for the applicant. We'd like to ask for two minutes for the rebuttal. With respect to the request today, there's two matters that are before you. There's an SP, and then there's a modification of the UDO. As was mentioned in the staff presentation, there was approximately a two-hour meeting that took place on April 10 of 2012, which dealt with the Design Review Committee. It was extremely well-attended, and as was commented by the staff and by Counsel Lady Langster, significant changes were made taking and incorporating into those suggestions. The next meeting, which took place, was April, excuse me, May 16, and that was the neighborhood meeting. Once again, it was extremely well-attended. Further suggestions came out, and as the staff commented, and so did the Counsel Lady, in incorporation of virtually all of those members. To my knowledge, my client has agreed with every request from every one of the metro agencies that has reviewed this matter. As the staff has commented, there's clearly a policy compliance issue here. There's no issue at all with the policy. And in implementing the specific plan, the staff has commented that this plan has created, creates walkable neighborhoods, supports a variety of transportation choices, provides a range of housing choices, supports infill development, and finally promotes compact building design. I think everybody's also aware that the rapid bus transit system has as a key going from downtown to initially out to Murphy Road and eventually out further. But I'd comment to you that this is exactly spot-on with respect to the type of development they're looking for. The client had that in mind when they looked at this property and this zoning. We respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you for your courtesies.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Kevin Gangware. I'm civil engineer on the project. Wanted to speak to the two issues that probably come commonly to the commission, that's traffic and stormwater. On this site, everything from this property currently drains to the north towards Ackland Park. For the most part, it is all sheet flow, so it's draining across all the parking lots that are on the Westmont Apartment Complex currently, picking up the trash and the hydrocarbons and releasing it out onto Ackland Park Drive on the surface. There is no underground drainage system on the property currently. As part of our project, we will collect all of that water, treat it per Metro's requirements for water quality, and then also provide detention for it, and then we will connect it hard-pipe. There is one catch basin in Ackland Park Drive. We will connect it to that. So all of the excess water that kind of the neighbors are seeing now, which is kind of a bit of a minimal flooding on Ackland Park Drive, because the water just doesn't have anywhere to go, we'll collect all that, detain it, and then hard-pipe it to the drainage system. Related to the traffic, the traffic study has been performed by RPM Associates in accordance with Metro Public Works requirements. To, I think, a lot of people's unbelief, all of the intersections in this area operate currently at a level of Service A and B, which is about as good as it gets. With this development, all of the intersections continue to operate at those same levels of A and B. The only difference is a variance of about one to two seconds of extra delay for vehicles at these intersections. So it's a relatively negligible change in the traffic, which was a little surprising, I think, to everyone, but Public Works has that. They are in the process of reviewing that. We hope for your approval. Thank you.
I'm Nelson Crowe. I represent the developer, Four Star Group. Who we are, we're based in Austin, Texas. We're a public company, about 146,000 acres in nine states and 12 markets. We've invested about $25 million in the National MSA since the mid-1990s, providing over 1,000 homes, and afford to continue this relationship in this area of Ackland Park. We spent substantial time with the city, with the DRC, with the neighbors, with the residents, with the Planning Commission already, trying to address the issues and concerns that they may have with our development. And a couple of the big concerns previously were parking, and they want to understand our parking suggestions and plans. We've increased the parking count from 417 spots to 479, and that's an addition of about 85, 85 spots per level versus 71 previously. The current allowance is about 451 spots with the 25% reduction with the UDO, which would bring it to 338 spots. We're actually providing 479. So we believe that's ample parking for the residents, a big improvement what they have right now. It's going to allow for visitor parking, all residents to have one spot per bedroom, not just per unit. And we also add 12 spots on Ackland Park Drive for parallel parking, for curb appeal and for future residents. From our experience, again, we develop, we've developed over 30,000 units in Florida, Texas, and Colorado, our team has, and most of these parking levels remain vacant throughout the day. So while we could seek a reduction in parking, we want to accommodate the residents, accommodate the neighbors' concerns, make sure no cars are parking along their driveways, along their yards, and have ample parking in the parking structure. Another concern was a setback, and as Joni mentioned, on the interior side, it was a five-foot minimum. We've increased that to 15 feet to make sure that the neighboring units have ample space and don't feel as though there's an encroachment on their lawn. Curb appeal is another thing. We want to make sure, as you saw on the rendering, we're trying to use the kind of historic and classic architecture that will last, we believe, for many years here, and make it very attractive. We've allowed a furniture setback for benches and pedestrian walkways. We've increased the sidewalk width from about 5 feet to 10 feet along Fairmont and Ackland Drive. We've also introduced stoops along Ackland Park Drive to allow for direct entrance. So if a neighboring unit looks apart, it doesn't look like a four-story, you know, large building there, it's actually a direct townhome-type feel. So it should be very welcoming for residences and for current neighbors. We're excited to be a part of the Ackland Park community. We have worked with the staff, property management staff, right now, to allow all residents to live there through May 31, 2013. Previous, in our meeting, we said we could begin development as soon as first quarter 2013. There was concerns about, you know, finishing a lease term, so we've allowed any leases to be renewed, or new leases to be signed, to extend a full year through next May of 2013 before we decided to break ground. So trying to accommodate the residents in that matter. Thank you for your time.
Good old presentation, Dr. Fink. And you've got two minutes left for rebuttal. Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Honorable Chairman, distinguished commissioners, my name is Jeff Zeitlin. I'm here today to speak in support of the project. This project is an excellent project that will continue quality growth and urban revitalization in the Midtown area, and I would ask your support.
Thank you.
Hi, Commissioner. I had no idea I was going to be speaking to a whole panel. I'm Christina Varelo. I'm currently a resident of the Westmont Apartments, and I just moved from inside to Apartment D109 to D2, which is right on the parking level. And I know that change is inevitable, but it would be nice to be heard about the things that I would like, that would help me with safety issues. Being a pedestrian, being a little disabled, I was glad, glad to hear about the possible sidewalks on Fairmont, because the intersection of Fairmont and Ackland Park is very dangerous with the hill. It's blindsided, and there's no sidewalk on that side of Fairmont. That'd be great. And like Mr. Gangware said, the drainage is poured down when it rains. When it rains, the drainage really overflows. So I just appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, commission, my name is Ted Cromer. I am on the Design Review Committee. I attended the Design Review Committee meeting and also attended the community meeting. I think that the plans have been modified and meet all of the recommendations that we made in those, both of those meetings. And I am in favor of it. I think that the project really meets the spirit of the UDO that was passed, I guess, about six years ago by the community. So I would ask also for your support and favor of this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wish to speak in opposition?
My name is Amy Anstey, and I live at Longview Condominiums. And we are located at the top of the hill on Long Boulevard. As she said, it's a dead-end circular drive, and we have five buildings around that circle. Our community is going to be broken up by the access alley that's proposed to be built between Fairmont and Long, which will cause major upheaval for our community. But all in all, I would just like to say that we feel that the redevelopment of the Westmont property is going to be very beneficial for the neighborhood. So I'm not opposed to this development. And I will say that they have taken our comments into consideration. They've been very good about doing that, true to their word. My major issue, and I think what most people spoke to, is the traffic situation in our neighborhood. I found that the traffic impact study was a little bit misleading in some places if you don't actually live there. And the photo of Long Boulevard, for example, is in the opposite direction of the dead-end where we live and where the access point will be located. It's described as having sidewalks and being a broad street. It's very narrow there with parking on either side and no sidewalks. So where the actual traffic that's going to be directed through that section of Long Boulevard is going to be, is not, I felt, fairly represented in the traffic impact study. And as the developer mentioned, I don't think anybody who was at the neighborhood meeting was buying at all that there's not going to be a major traffic situation involving very long backups. You can wait. I personally waited this week at 5:00 PM for more than 15 minutes in front of Westmont, just trying to get down to West End. And for me, that's not a small wait time, which would be A or B. The intersection at Long Boulevard and Ackland is actually rated as F in the traffic impact study. So it's as bad as it can be right now. That and the situation of the roads where there are no turning lanes, I just feel that the traffic situation is going to be hideous if this goes forward as planned. So I would just say that less density is, is called for in this situation. Please don't rezone for 347 units.
Thank you.
Vladimir Ernlo, current resident of the Westmont Complex. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'll sidestep the issue of what is going to happen to the residents of the current Westmont Complex, since the Forester has made some attempt towards that end to accommodate that. But I would like to consider this. I have reviewed the revised, used specters for this project. They have made some allowances for parking within the complex, but all, but I'm afraid the issue of traffic outside and around the complex still really hasn't been resolved to anyone's satisfaction. This part of Ackland Park Drive opens out onto American Center, a large office complex, as well as an outback steakhouse. Those traffic as it is, is, as previous mentioned, and unbelievable, and tripling the number of units available on that street is just going to make things even worse. Also, you should consider, as mentioned previously, that Ackland Park Drive butts directly onto West End Avenue, whom, traffic on that part of West End Avenue is already outrageous during rush hour as it is. The bleed over is inevitable if this project continues forward. I'd also like to point out that this sounds remarkably like what happened with the development on 12th South. Development was made for larger apartment complexes that allowed for more residents. Parking and traffic subsequently deteriorated. I would like that taken into consideration. I don't believe this complex, this new proposed complex is good for Ackland Park Drive or the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Would you be able to go back in your presentation to the cars on Fairmont Court? Thank you. Right there. Appreciate it. Good afternoon. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I felt compelled to. I'm on the board of the Homeowners Association for Fairmont Court Condominiums. My condo butts directly up against this property. I think this picture is very ironic in talking about parking, because all the cars shown in this picture are actually parked illegally on the street. If you pull back slightly, there's a sign that says, "No parking anytime" on here. It just goes to show that there is an extreme parking situation in this area. And while it sounds like they've taken steps within the last couple of days to address that issue, I'm not necessarily opposed to this project. In fact, I think it's probably a good thing. I would ask that you maybe defer in making a judgment on this at this time, as apparently within the last two days, significant changes have been made to this plan, which haven't really been made available to the community, myself included. I came here thinking that there was going to be a very large parking concern. Seems they've taken some steps to address that with adding some parking. But I had looked at, ran some numbers myself a few days ago, and it seemed that there wasn't sufficient parking, and now there may or may not be. I'm not really sure. I would like the time to review that, though, before a decision is made. And I agree with the lady who spoke previously. I don't, didn't catch her name. But there is usually during rush hour, a line from West End Avenue all the way up Ackland Park Drive, not quite to Long Boulevard, but almost every single day. And I don't see that adding units to this apartment complex is going to lessen that situation. And I'd just like for you to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Class speaker, would you come back and give us your name and address, please?
I said I wasn't prepared to speak. Josh Durth, 209 Fairmont Court.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, name's Charlie Bailey, 3225 West End Circle. Here representing the Homeowners Association for Magnolia Court. It's a corner of West End and Ackland. Once again, project, not against upgrading the neighborhood. Looks great. All comes back to density. Parking is an issue currently right now in West End, West End Circle that, that tees into Ackland Park, which is directly in front of the complex, Westmont. Right now, we have, we have parking all up and down that, that side of the road, various prime time, night, nighttime parking, overnight parking and whatnot. Understand that's public property, and that's fine, but just major concerns of, of the numbers there with tripling the size of, with the rezoning, just a real problem with feeling comfortable with the, even with the addition of spots, and we really appreciate hearing that, that's, that's great. They're trying to adhere to, to things that have been spoken from the community. But the, the traffic flow, West End Circle, which is prior to Long Boulevard, not uncommon daily backup at certain points in the time of the day, all the way up West End Circle, which is three blocks up from West, from West End itself. So I just, I can't see tripling the size is, and then the, the study, the traffic study showed A and B at West End, or A, yeah, A and B at different times, at West End, at Ackland. True reflection on a daily basis there, that's just a major problem, I think. So not against the project, upgrade of the project. It would, it would upgrade the neighborhood. Just the numbers there is, is just too large to rezone that to 347 units, just too much. But anyway, take, I appreciate you taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Darlene Hamilton, and I live at 3306 Long Boulevard. Would you go back to the picture where it shows where, like? Okay, the little building that's on the left-hand corner up the top, that's where I live. And this thing is going to be four, five stories, how many stories high?
Four on that side.
Four stories high. I get a little bit of sun in the morning that's not blocked off by the huge buildings that are down on West End Avenue. But if this thing goes up, I'm not going to get any light coming in until, like, noon. So of course I'm opposed to it because it's going to block out all my morning sun. But I'm also opposed because of the traffic situation. Yesterday, 4:30 in the afternoon, I come home from work, I take a left up onto Ackland Park Drive from West End Avenue, and it is backed up maybe three car, two or three car lengths back from Long Boulevard. And that sits there. As she was saying, it takes 15 minutes sometimes to get from that intersection down to West End Avenue. And if they open up an alleyway on the back end, that's going to cut between our building, which is A through, A1 through four, I mean, yeah, A1 through four, from the rest of our buildings, the buildings that are actually on the cul-de-sac that you circle around if you keep going down Long Boulevard. So my building is going to be sitting out there all by itself. And then there's going to be this alleyway coming out there. And so they're going to be, right, we park our car right in front of our building. And so we're going to have to be watching out for traffic coming behind our building, where we're accustomed to there being a dumpster sitting there, you know? So it's not that, getting out is not that hard. Getting in is a little bit difficult. And I think that if they put in triple the units that are there now, it's going to be backed up on the other side of the interstate bridge. Which is not that far, really. I mean, it sounds like it's far, but it's not that far. So because of those reasons, I, I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak, if you line up behind each other's microphone?
Good evening. My name is Greg Tidwell. I also live in that building at 3306 Long Boulevard. I'm not in opposition to the project. I'm not even really as much in opposition personally to the density of the project. Or the traffic is, is a definite concern. I can attest to the statements of the previous speakers as to how Ackland Park does backup during rush hour, mostly from the office traffic coming out of the American Center down to Ackland to get down to West End. That tends to be when it is at peak, at peak backup. Do you have some concerns that I believe have been addressed by the applicant regarding the common property line setback that backs up to our building? Previously five feet, that has been revised to be 15 feet. I was also wanting to ask, I really wanted to ask a procedural question. With this being a preliminary SP, is there going to be a final SP hearing as well?
If the preliminary is consistent with the final, it would be administrative. But otherwise, if it's different from the final, there's.
Okay. Okay. Some of the concerned conditions we had as far as parking with maybe overflow parking coming into the Long, Longview Neighborhood parking lot, and also with dog walking and other things like that, with the number of dwelling units that are being proposed in the, in the application. One conditional requirement that might be something to be discussed could be privacy fencing along the common property lines, which could be a win-win for the new tenants of the apartment, the new proposed apartment building on the ground floor. Would also benefit those of us on the other side of the property line as far as privacy and the number of dwellings that close to our current building. With that, that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? The applicant now has two minutes rebuttal if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman, first, I would mention that the planning commission has always been historically very supportive of the dialogue and compromise that takes place between developers and neighbors. This took place here on two occasions. The Design Review Committee met with Joanie Priest and the staff. As she said, we've incorporated most of those changes. The second was at the neighborhood meeting. Again, you heard the council lady not only say that we had incorporated all those things, but that she supports the project. We've been blessed in Nashville for the last number of years to have Rick Bernhardt as the executive director of the Planning Commission and in the editorial yesterday in the Tennessee. And one of the things he said is spot on with respect to this development. His comment was, "We face three critical decisions that will dictate whether we shape our future or simply accept the future." The second item was, "The east-west transit connector will determine whether Nashville and the region will embrace the transportation and economic requirements for a sustainable 21st century city." That's exactly what this project complements, as was mentioned. The only member of the Design Review Committee who has testified here was Mr. Ted Cromer. He told you this fulfilled the total spirit of, he felt that we had incorporated all of their suggestions with respect to even accommodating tenants. The client went out of their way to say that we will give a full year. We'll give notice at beginning of May 31. We'll give a full year till May 31 of the next year for those that wish to stay. Frankly, the one request for a defer, although no one really spoke in against it, was basically changes have been made. Those changes are the ones that directly came out of the Design Review Committee and more recently, the Neighborhood Committee. So we're asking you, please don't defer, please approve it. Mr. Gangware has some short comments.
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to point out, related to the traffic study, again, at no point did we mean to insinuate that there was not long delays out there. There certainly are. What we said was that there's no increase in the delays with this project. You have a capable traffic engineer at Public Works. They've reviewed it, they are reviewing it. Will stand by any conditions that they add to it before third reading at, at City Council. Thank you.
There's a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing, in favor of I. Councilman. Plaidman. Bill.
We're coming.
Judy.
I'm just excited about the way the neighborhood had, opportunity to have a voice and the meetings that went on. I just have one question, though. I don't know if it makes a difference or not, but there was a request maybe to put up a privacy fence between the two properties. Is that something that? Yes, sir. You all would do that? Okay, then I'm fine.
Tell me the mix of the, and the number of units in the Westmont that you're tearing down.
Mr. Haines, we don't know the exact numbers, but we think it's about a 60/40 split, 61-bedroom to 40% two bedrooms.
That are being torn down.
Yes.
And then the mix in the proposed 347 between one and two bedrooms?
A 70/30 split, 70% one bedroom.
Otherwise, this is a fabulous plan.
Thank you.
Greg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess just a few comments is that, real familiar with the area. I used to be a waiter at Outback, right behind there, long time. Special place in my heart. I even know a lot of friends that, that live, oh, that live in the current place. I'm kind of sad to see it go, but this, this seems like a really good, good project. I really want to say, I do appreciate the neighbors and the, and the developer working together to make it a really good project. Some of the things I really like about the project is the better walkability, bikability, some of the better exterior finishes. It seemed like that was really good. And the last comment I want to make, just so everybody knows, that I think is important, is to note that the BRT line going down West End, the Bus Rapid Transit line, is a huge, huge, huge investment of public dollars. And I think that if, if, that we should really applaud Nashville for moving in that direction, because it's true that BRT spurs multimillion private dollar developments. And I think that this is a testament to, to that. Hopefully, with these types of developments, there'll be less cars on the road to solve the traffic problem. And I think that good, that, that, that is what good planning is about. And so, anyway, I, I really like the plan overall. I know that the councilwoman, the neighbors, and the developer will work out some of these small differences, but I think that this will really be a great development for Nashville.
Andrea.
Ditto. That's about exactly what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's, I'm happy to hear that we're saying, thinking the same way. This, I was going to say, maybe in addition to that, just that in the next process of conversations with council and when it moves forward, if it does, I assume that maybe some of the neighbors get to learn more about what really is going on in the corridor. get to learn more about what really is going on in the corridor and where the bus stops will be and how it will affect and change things in the next few years, because I think it would be more, people greet this with more optimism once they learn more about it. I think it's exciting.
Phil?
I move approval as the staff recommends, with conditions of the preliminary SP, including any requirements from the traffic impact study or additional requirements from the Public Works.
It says on 5A. 5A, okay. So second. Motion second for approval, staff recommendation approval of conditions of preliminary SP, including any requirements from the traffic impact study, additional requirements from Public Works, disapproval without all conditions. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion on 5B?
I move approval of 5B, which is modifications to the UDO standards with approval of the preliminary SP.
Motion second on 5B for staff, for approval of the requested modification of the UDO standards with approval of the preliminary SP. All in favor? Any opposed? Phil, you were chairman of the election nominations. Have you got a report for us?
Yes, and I want to thank the fellow members of the nominating committee, Commissioners Atkins, Cummins, and Claiborne. And the report I have is nominations, and all four of the people that are involved have accepted their name being listed. For chairman, Jim McLean. For vice chairman, there are two, Hunter G. and Stuart Clifton.
Hunter's requested his name to be withdrawn.
Be withdrawn for consideration.
Okay. And for executive committee representative, Andre Laquire.
Okay, so the nominees would be Jim McLean as chairman, excuse me, Jim McLean as chairman, Stuart Clifton as vice chair, and Andre as the third member of the executive committee.
And we so move from the nominating committee approval of these three.
Let me ask if there's other nominations. Seeing none, would you like to have that by acclamation?
By acclamation on the three individuals nominated.
Got a motion? What do you do? There's a motion second to accept these as your new officers for the next year. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, those are official. Phil, anything from the Parks Board?
No, sir. Our next meeting will be the first Monday in June.
Excuse me, excuse me. I apologize.
We've got three more cases.
What are the numbers? I apologize. We've lost our one. We may need a new chairman. Let's see, we've got, matter of fact, we're going to stand adjourned because we do not have a four. We need six, and we only have five, so. Adjourned.
All right. That's the chairman.